Good evening. It's 7:00 and time for Whitehall City Council Meeting of July 7, 2020. Let's start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Odd, would you please call roll?
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
Present.
Heck. President Potter.
Here.
Mr. President, move to excuse the absent members. Second?
I've had a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent members. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The members have been excused. At this time, I'll accept a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the June 16 minutes.
Second. Thank you. There've been a motion by Ms. Constance, second by Mr. Cantor, for the approval of the June 16, 2020, and agenda of regular meeting minutes. Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation, Project Prevent Backflow Special. Megan Myers will be presenting along with Ryan Andrews, Senior Project Manager for EM Luchetee.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I'm going to get the PowerPoint running real quick. We'll return to the present session. Thank you. So for anybody following along at home tonight, the information that I'm presenting to council is also available on the city's website on the homepage, and we also posted a link to the Facebook page. So the packets that I presented to you tonight are also in web form on the website currently. So tonight does mark the official start of the application period for Project Prevent Backflow. In response to the two major flooding events we had this spring, we rethought a homeowner grant opportunity, and out of it came this idea to assist residents with installing what are called backwater valves in their basements. And I'm not going to get into the technical aspects of that. I'm here to present more on how this program is going to be implemented. Ryan will actually kind of take care of that for you a little bit later. But effectively, what we're attempting to do is with the $200,000 that was allocated by council, help as many residents as possible install these devices. So Julie, can you do the next slide? Through the program, depending on your income level, percent of your percentage of the poverty line, you would qualify to receive more of a grant towards the program. Our expected cost for the program might be about $300 or $3,000 per install. So if you are at 150% of the poverty level, our reimbursement rate would be 90%, so you would be expected to help about $300, and that goes up with income level. We could, you know, have designed it to be across the board, one grant level, but we thought with the limited funds that we have, this is one good way to help as many people as possible install this device. Something else that's tied to the allocation that you all helped approve, Franklin County Public Health has agreed to waive inspection fees, and so that's going to help stretch these dollars a little bit further. Slide. So the application is now available online. Anybody who, any resident who is living in an owner-occupied home, single-family dwelling or duplex, would be eligible, and they must have submitted flooding information for the floods that occurred in March and in May. The application period, as I mentioned, is officially open as of tonight and will continue through the end of the month. And then we're actually going to, we're anticipating a number of applications for this. The people will be selected through a random lottery. Slide. And so to give you a little bit of a concept of timeline, Ryan and his team have been helping us to develop an invitation to bid of an RFP, which we're going to post in August. We anticipate making that product award in October. In between there is when we'll notify residents of their opportunity, their invitation to participate if they were a selectee from the lottery. And then also in October is when their deposit, their portion of that fee would be remitted to the city, and the city would be working with the contractor to pay the rest of that fee. So the project, we anticipate that the actual installation is to occur from late fall through early spring. Contracts typically states 180 days, which should be plenty of time. But we are asking for prices, one standard price for three years, in the instance that council is interested in extending the program into future years. And this year alone, it really does depend on kind of the body of the people who are selected through the lottery, exactly how many homes we are able to assist. But we're estimating somewhere between 70 to 80 is our best guess. Uh, slide. So Ryan's going to explain a little bit about what these devices are and how they work.
Sure. So the backwater valve is a plumbing fixture that would be installed on the main sanitary lateral of the main drain that leaves the house as it takes wastewater into the sewer. And typically, those are found underneath the basement floor. And so the work that we would be proposing is to have a plumbing contractor come in. They have to sort of chip up the basement floor in a spot once we've identified where that drain line exists, and then they'll install the valve, and then patch everything back up. Now, the backwater valve is a pretty simple device. It has a flapper inside of it that automatically shuts when water is coming the wrong direction. And so, you know, there's nothing, you know, it doesn't require power or anything like that. It's a simple device that happens based on the pressure of water on one side of the flapper versus the other side. And so during normal operations, when the sewer isn't surcharged, you know, wastewater will flow out of the house like it normally does, like it's supposed to. And then during times following intense rain events where we have a lot of this rainfall-derived infiltration into the sewer system that causes these surcharges, you know, as the water in the sewer elevates up to the level of that drain pipe coming out of the resident's basement, the pressure builds up in the line and then the flapper shuts. And so it prevents water from continuing to flow in to the point where it should not be coming out of floor drains, plumbing fixtures, and things like that, which is, you know, what has happened historically in the past if people don't have this type of protection in place.
Slide. So with that, again, the application is available now online on the city's website along with some FAQs and other details, as well as a homeowner agreement, which is part of the application. We'll also have paper copies here at City Hall, and I'll be the point person on this. So anybody who has questions is welcome to reach out to me as part of the community affairs office. And again, for anybody at home listening, those applications are due July 31st. With that, do you all have any questions?
I do. I want to make sure that's one thing. Our residents do not give the plumbers any money. They give it...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The fees are remitted to the city. So they'll receive their initial notification of award in August. We do anticipate having a waitlist because we won't know the actual per-unit fee from a contractor until we receive an open invitation bid. At that point, those people will be mailed pretty much an invoice from the city for their portion, and then they won't be able to actually schedule their installation date until we receive that fee.
Thank you.
So I've got a question. So I noticed, just quickly scanning this, that if somebody, if their storm is tied to sanitary, that makes them ineligible. However, if they were to get that repaired or rerouted, more succinctly, would they then be able to then be considered? Or will they basically have to lose their place in line and have to...
Yeah. So part of the pre-screening process, I guess you'd call it, is we are going to take a look at the inside of the sewer laterals leading to the homes for people who do apply to verify that there's not yard drains, perimeter foundation drains from the house or downspouts tied into the sanitary ladder. Because all of those things contribute to this overall problem, and technically, they're a violation of the Clean Water Act.
Correct.
And so, and City Hall. And so we would require or ask those people to disconnect those things. And then once they have done that and provide evidence that they've done it, then certainly they're eligible for the program.
Weren't we tested a few years back across the...
Yeah, we've done so. We had a five-year sanitary study that we did from 2009 through about 2014. And through that process, we identified a lot of those things. But we did not check every house during that study. We really focused in on certain target areas. So there could be residents that are still, still do have those types of things tied into the sanitary sewer. You know, it's just a process of identifying those.
No, a lot of folks probably won't know that that is the case.
Yeah, you're short of smoking each house.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you have to put it in the floor in a basement. No way it can go out in the yard. And my question is, on a slab, dwelling this bill on a slab, will it be out in the yard?
Um, no. I, you know, a house that's on a slab...
Because you're going to have the inspection cap sticking up out of the floor somewhere.
Right. Yeah. I guess in that scenario, we would have probably identified a way for it to be done out in the yard. The reason we like doing it in the basement better is because out in the yard, you know, it'll get covered up by landscaping, grass, what have you. And these things should be looked at and inspected periodically. And so it does have a cap on it, and the plumbers will be giving the homeowners instructions on how to inspect it. It should be done, you know, once a year or so, just to make sure it's not plugged up or blocked. And it's just easier to find it and access it if you know where it is inside the house.
But you do have a large number of slab homes at Norton Field and throughout the city.
Sure.
So that's something that's going to have to be looked at pretty close for.
Any other questions?
One. So they had to get online. They had two of them. And did the thing that I saw online for the March 20th and maybe 18th and the 19th flooding, which you put out much information, and I thank you for doing that. I might have added that too. So as long as they did that, we're good to get, they're good to go into that.
No, that's a great question. So we were actually looking at the data today, and there are a number of individuals who have done that. About 315 used that web form to submit the flooding. If you break it down further, like, you know, we did it in March and in May, you've got about 20 people. But a lot of people waited until May to tell us about it. So we're going to be fairly flexible as long as we have some kind of proof that it did occur. And we want them to report that data to us because that is something that we're collecting for potential future studies, and so that's a little bit the point behind this. And also, it's information that in the meantime, we've been passing off to the county, to Franklin County Emergency and Mission Home and Security, and they're pleased with FEMA and US Small Business Administration.
So you think there might be maybe 70 or 80 that have, let me ask you, do you know the number that have got online and did this, like you're saying, earlier, 70 or 80? Is that...
The 315 total.
Okay.
And 20 of those were repeats from March and May. However, people often waited until May to tell us about March. They kind of submitted one form for both. So I don't have a number of that. So it's a little bit more than that than the four that they had.
Okay.
Good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan? Ryan, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This now brings us to our first poll public of the evening, and I do know there was two correspondents set in. So Ms. Odd, if you could please share those with us.
Thanks, Ryan.
Nicole Spicer, 4227 Rickman Becker Avenue, Apartment 606. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Kim Maggert, and all Whitehall elected officials. Thank you for your leadership of the city of Whitehall during this difficult time in our nation. Thank you, Mayor Maggert, for signing the executive order requiring face masks in Whitehall businesses and public spaces to assist in reducing the spread of COVID-19. Thank you, City Council, for adopting ordinance number 049-2020, affirming the Franklin County declaration that racism is a public health crisis in Franklin County, including the city of Whitehall. We will get through this together. Take care and be safe. Amy LaPorte, 4227 Rickman Becker Avenue, Apartment 574. Whitehall City Council members, good evening. I hope that you have, you all had a safe holiday. I'm extremely disappointed in the amount of fireworks that were allowed to be set off during the 4th of July celebration weekend in Whitehall. I had to make a non-emergency call to the Whitehall Police Department because of the amount of fireworks being let off in the field next to Save-A-Lot. I had to over-medicate my dog because of her shaking. The fireworks were going off above my front window for over two hours. Nothing was done. Not one police officer responded. May I please suggest that Whitehall bring in more law enforcement next year if the community does not once more have a 4th of July celebration? I am not happy that I had to over-medicate my dog. I am sure that I am not the only citizen of a pet owner who feels this way. Thank you for hearing my complaint and taking it into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Odd. Standing Committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Financial Management, we met last June 23rd. And our minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore's not here this evening. Mr. Bailey, would you like to cover for that since you're on that committee as well?
Sure. Community and Elder Advocacy also met June 23rd. We have nothing on the agenda tonight. Plan to meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, you want to get that for me? Community Standards and Enforcement met two weeks ago, June 23rd. Our minutes are on file. We've got something on the agenda this evening, and we'll be meeting again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met on June 23rd. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck. She is not with us this evening. Mr. Bailey, you're second listed in that committee, so I will defer to you.
Structure Maintenance and Services also met on June 23rd. It may have had one item, but I don't think there's anything on the agenda tonight. But they will meet again next Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met a couple weeks ago, and our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week on Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Terrific. And finally, Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met on the 23rd. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again in two weeks or next week in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Officials' Reports. The mayor's not with us this evening, nor is our attorney, Mr. Vivins, nor Auditor Dan Miller. We do have Director of Development and Public Service, Zach Woodruff. Do you have a report for us this evening?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Ban Gray, Director of Public Service is not with us, nor is our Treasurer Steve Quinzel. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. The mayor's report to council for May 2020, the auditor's expense report for May 2020, the auditor's bank report for May 2020, the auditor's statement of cash position report for May 2020, the auditor's revenue report for May 2020, the treasurer's investment report for May 2020, the treasurer's activity by fund report for May 2020, and the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for May 2020. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have two items on the agenda this evening. Minutes of the June 4, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission, and the agenda for the July 2, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission. This now brings us to our first of two public hearings. First is for ordinance 432020, mending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified orders of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changes the zoning on property located on East Broad Street, parcel number 090008249, from exceptional use district EU to general commerce district GCD, property owned by Office City. I would ask, we'll open this public hearing at 7:21. I would ask the proponent to please come forward, state your name, organization they're representing, and your address.
Good evening, President Potter, and members of the council. I'm Charlie Frost with Casco, 250, City Senator Axie, 500. Want to thank you for letting me have the opportunity to talk to you about the resumé application that we have. I have some pictures of stuff that you can use, but I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. This is a former Applebee's site in the land to the east of it. Several years ago, we came to you and asked to rezone it to exceptional use because we were working with a particular user for three, I'm not sure what I can do here.
There you go. If you guys... Thank you.
If you guys...
That way they can also hear you.
Yeah.
That way the folks who are watching...
So we came to you with three, with a user that was doing three micro hospitals in Columbus. If you wanted, I knew all the area, one double area, one here. And they went to rezone property, they got a contract, and then they decided, they, I think at the time, they hadn't really worked with any of the end-users that they needed to be. So they pulled out of all three contracts. And at the time, we went ahead, we were, one of the requirements for our, to get closed, was to get it zoned exceptional use. And we were literally a week before closing when they pulled out, told us. So unfortunately, that didn't happen. And actually, the zoning for exceptional use reverts back to the old use, which would be what we're asking for today. And it's not used in three years. Well, three years is this fall, so even if we didn't vote tonight, it would go back. What we did is was we got somebody who wanted to take the, wanted to take the former Applebee's space, made it for rumors, it's Denny's, to come and take the space, and I can answer some questions. They're going to do some minor modifications to the building. It's going to be just like a lot of any of the other ones we've been in before. The operator is somebody who's been with Denny's for over 15 years. He is literally going to be perfect here. I don't think he'll sleep. He's going to be there every day. So I think it should be, we all rock him on and operate it. He operates other ones. My understanding is he operates one right now out in California. But the good news is, is that we think this would be a great use, breakfast, lunch, dinner, and other times you can get some food. So we had revert the deficit to the existing general commercial zoning there. I think there's some questions, even more information.
During a normal year, which of course 2020 is not, how many tables, booths?
Well, it's interesting. They will have to comply with naturally any Franklin County Public Health and city of Whitehall requirements for restaurants, internal restaurants. So I imagine they were going to have to reduce to, I don't know if they have, if you guys have a standard, whatever that is, they will have to do. They were hoping to open this year, so who knows what that's going to be. But unfortunately, you asked me a good question. I mean, clearly, their high period is during... Let's see. Clearly, the 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is really where they, you know, they have most employees. They have 40, 45 employees, 30 full-time. You know, Saturday and Sunday is a big period, of course. Sometimes Friday and even Saturday night can be pretty, pretty good. He doesn't say, I thought I asked all the questions, but when I asked all these questions, I didn't think at the time on COVID what it is. And we're, you know, our fingers are crossed that everything is slowly moving forward. Last time we had a conversation, everything is. Surprisingly enough, we go across our portfolio. One thing that's, if we hit the hardest restaurant, but that is also the type of use that seems to be coming in one of the police states. So we can't figure out exactly what's happening. I think the fact that they're open longer hours will help them as opposed to somebody should go for better, for better guidance.
Are they going to do a complete renovation on the indoors? And the reason I say that is because of, and I think everybody's been there, the bar area.
Yeah.
And then to the left, it's an elevated, as is...
I, we have not seen interior plans. I think they're still working on them. But, you know, I'm not aware of Denny's having alcohol.
No, no, no. I know the bar's coming out.
So they would be, no, what I'm guessing is that...
I'm trying to get a vision on what it's going to look like.
I know what they say, you can make sure, see if you've got some...
Most of us, I mean.
It's gone, Jim.
There might be some other, I don't know if there's, if that's the only thing on there or if there's any...
There'd be planes, planes, planes.
Huh?
They'd be breaking planes.
I thought I had some...
This is just a lot split.
So there's nothing else on there?
That's right. I'm sure they'll be bringing us the plan, so maybe you would know.
Slide 40.
Oh, you know where it might be?
Correct.
Do you go back, sorry, back to the main, see elevations on the other side?
There you go.
I saw, yeah, there you go. We're doing some improvements to the tower, and I wish I had color, but I think they were, you know, they're kind of just updating the exterior of the building.
Right.
From what we can see, there are going to be exterior improvements to the sidewalk around the front and some other kind of just around the building. And my guess is, is that with COVID, that they're probably going to be maybe requesting certain areas to, they're going to provide, so they'll be probably putting takeout signs for, you know, more and more people who are going to take out.
Right. Normal year, I mean.
Yeah, one over here, or, you know, for deliveries, for the carretes and the other folks who are coming to get different meals to have.
Okay.
The Applebee's used to have it on the west side of the building on that one door. And, you know, the one thing that I have very confidence is, I've never had, talked to an owner-operator who, who I think is getting an apartment across the street. And the idea is he's...
Wow.
Short view.
He is going to live all the time.
So he is, his view, this is, this is his baby, and he wants it to be, you know.
Yeah.
So he's very customer service oriented, and I thought that would be very nice.
That's good.
Yes.
So I hope, I don't know if his timing will be effective. That was his goal.
What did you say the hours were going to be?
Well, I think they're open 24/7.
I think there's a 24-hour operation.
That's what I thought, too, is if they have peak periods, first mornings and weekends, we tend to, or 7:00 to...
Well, this is just for lots.
He is going to live there.
My understanding is this is for...
Does somebody need that apartment?
Yeah. So, so anyways, the idea is, is this is kind of reverting back to the original zone of the...
Well, it's nice. We lost Paul's and we lost Applebee's, so this is kind of a nice combination.
And we had some other...
Let's just say it's a brand span for Whitehall.
It is.
So we were pretty happy with what, we've heard some folks have been on the site, but we really didn't want them to have a conversation with Zach Woodruff, too, about the expectation. So we hope that this is something, something...
Yeah, that's great.
I have a question for Zach. This, this ordinance is for the lot split only, not for the approval of any renovations or anything of that nature, right?
So this is, this is a rezoning?
Yeah.
So it's just on the rezoning for the appropriateness of the use?
I said lot split. I misspoke. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Correct. Yeah. So it's just about the proposed use. You know, we looked a little bit at their elevations just to ensure compliance with the overlay.
So we'll be seeing site plans later on this?
No, no, sir. I mean, it's an existing building. There's nothing else for council. There's no...
No, the building department.
Yeah, there's no other legislative process.
Okay, no, no renovation or expansion or anything?
They're not going wider?
No.
Not at all?
Okay.
Okay.
We did, we did fix the line better on the eastern, it's a little slightly shifted when we did a lot split, we got that free. We shifted it a little better, just make it a little better for, especially if we developed a bit of sign, if there's landscape in there, creates the right number of circulation, they can reach right there to the top on this side, who have never changed it, so.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie, thank you, good to see you. Sorry, missed you at the reunion.
I know.
Next year, exactly. Ms. Aug, were there any other proponents or opponents to this that made any comments to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:31, which will then move us to our second public hearing of the evening, which is ordinance 472020, amending the zoning map attached to 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow Armstrong Development to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at 4720 East Main Street, property owned by Sugar Properties. I'll be opening this public hearing at 7:31. This time, I'd invite the proponent to please come forward, state your name, organization, and an address for the record.
My name is Jeff Longchamp, I'm with CESO.
Excuse me, Jeff, if you'd like, you can.
Swan, you approve.
Okay.
My name is Jeff Longchamp, I'm with CESO, engineering company headquartered in Dayton, but we have a Columbus office up in here, in East 270 Cleveland, inner belt there. I'm here, that's 2800, here on behalf of Armstrong Development, we are their engineer for this project. Armstrong is a developer based, I think they have a couple of different offices, but they're nationwide, potentially they pair with restaurants or corporations or businesses that want to expand but don't want to do it themselves, essentially. Del Taco is a project we have here that would like to go in at 47, 4720 East Main Street in Whitehall. In fact, we're here for to request a special permit for a drive-through facility. As I've mentioned, it would be at Del Taco, we have a site on there, I think we have it. It's awesome. I'm just trying to.
No, I think there's.
I think we just have all that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, as you see here, you know, site plan, going to be an entrance in on the right side, parking on the right side along the building there. Drive-through starts at more than a portion of the property, as well as the bypass lane to exit. Del Taco, they are the, obviously, the restaurant, they are franchising, franchising is two, projected, I guess franchisee. And then Armstrong is kind of being one to help develop things, so they hired us to move forward with this process, move forward with the plans. And this is a site layout that we kind of all came to terms with and agreed on, provide by all parking requirements, has a bypass lane, entrance only and exit on lanes that are requested. And then quite a few, 13 cars, 12 and a half cars fit in the drive-through lane, provide by all necessary landscape and stuff like requirements, as well as the engineering and design requirements, as well, once we get to that process. As far as other items, hours of operation, they kind of vary based on jurisdiction. They do sometimes operate at 24 hours if there is no special process or any of the exception or go hand-in-hand with that. Otherwise, they are typically 10:00 AM to midnight daily. All lighting, poles, and anything that could be a potential nuance would not be on after hours, except maybe some security lights and fixtures. The elevations of the building kind of have California Southwest and playing to it, if you know, that's where they're headquartered. So some of the colors are a bit more vibrant than you may see. There's some outdoor patio seating in the front along the front edge there, along this main, involves the sidewalk that goes across the thrash, to be all redone and researched. So I know there's a misty building there existing site there now, that will all be done, done over, kind of completely redone, the site redone, completely removed. Well, there we go, I think that kind of covered most of it, but there's another question we have next.
On the exit, is that going to be east and west exit when you come out? Across the.
You say access, so the east side would be the entrance only?
Yeah, I understand that. Once you exit on the west side, they're going to be able to exit in both directions. It's a pretty busy area.
It, it's, it doesn't change the, this site plan doesn't change the access that currently exists for the site.
That's true. What, how many employees would it have?
I think maximum, it ranges from probably about four to six to seven, I don't know, I've got a range, but peak hours may be between six and seven, must be hours, I would say three or four.
Under current situations, how many people are they planning on being able to seat inside?
Yeah, so hearing that question before, I tried to look through my notes, I don't have the exact number of tables that exist in this prototype, if everything was good and fine, as far as, obviously, under these circumstances, I don't have that information.
Most of your business is drive-through almost?
Yeah, they, they really are on edge, I kind of see this reverse horseshoe look where they, they like to push a lot of their business.
You have four to six employees at one time in there? How many total?
I'm sorry?
How many total employees would this have? You said four to six, I assume that's per shift?
Yeah, so I would say, you know, it could range anywhere from all around 10, being that the maximum shift, peak busy, maximum shift, I've seen seven hours put down closer to probably six.
I understand that, but that's, that's per shift, right? How many total employees are you looking at?
I guess total.
To cover, they open seven days a week?
Yes. So I guess.
10 people?
Anywhere, yeah.
Not going to be able to cover that?
10 to 15 people.
So it'd leave a lot of hours for some of them.
Do they have any, any other questions from council?
The information was provided was very good.
Yeah, it was covered well. I'm finding commission.
How many are Del Tacos are there throughout the United States? Do you know by chance?
I do not know.
I saw you back for research and some of the questions I was asked. No, that's okay, I can, I can find that out myself.
No, I, I don't know, and I added down a different one I was working on, but.
There's a good presentation.
Yeah, appreciate it. They're coming to the Midwest and Central Ohio, so probably seeing more popular in the near future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aug, did any comments come to council office as far as additional proponents or opponents to this project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. With that, I'll close this public hearing at 7:39. Ms. Aug, would you please take a roll call as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation?
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion concerning our clerk of council, Julie Aug. I'd like to make a motion to reinstate her full-time with benefits effective immediately.
Second.
I thought this was a, I understand, I thought this was a topic that was going to be talked about next week.
You try it.
It is, so I think that, based on my conversation with you, Larry, that that is something we can do before making this motion.
We got a motion, I'm a second, Mr. President.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second if there's further discussion needs to be done.
Correct, there was going to be an executive session, discuss this.
I would ask that you withdraw your motion.
All right, Mr. President, Mr. Bailey, I'll withdraw my motion until.
However, I would say I appreciate you bringing it up.
I just think it's something that should be done, so, but I will withdraw my motion pending.
Our media actually. Okay, thank you. Now, third reading, we have ordinance 432020, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, change of the zoning on property located on East Broad Street, parcel number 090-008-249, from exceptional use district EU to general commerce district GCD, property owned by Office City, Inc.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 432020 and move for its adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 432020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 432020 has been adopted. Thank you. Ordinance 472020, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow Armstrong Development to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at 4720 East Main Street, property owned by Sugar Properties LLC.
Mr. President, we should introduce ordinance 472020 and move for its adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 472020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 472020 has been adopted. Second reading, we have got no legislation listed this evening, which now brings us to first reading, ordinance 522020, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $323,911.49 for unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101 to the Economic Development Incentives Fund 316 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 522020 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 522020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison.
Mr. President, can I speak to this real quick?
Please.
Thank you. So I know that at the last committee meeting, there was some confusion on this particular piece of legislation, and I emailed all the city council, but I wanted to, for the record, let people know exactly what this is, because again, there was some, there was some confusion. As you're aware, the 316 Economic Development Planning and Incentive Fund is funded throughout the year as a percentage of revenue that goes into the general fund. All of our municipal income tax agreements call for payments to be made to companies during the first portion of the calendar year that we have already entered into. Therefore, this fund does not build up enough money to cover a total year's worth of payment by July. The $323,911 is required to pay, in this particular case, two employers, Alliance Dad and Artland Bank, for their 2019 incentive that is due in 2020. And I have provided to council not only the copies of the agreements, but their 2019 reconciliation. Many of the companies that we have agreements with have exceeded their payroll in 2019, thus resulting in larger-than-anticipated payments. But let me be clear, that is a good thing for the city. In fact, last year, seven companies that have municipal income tax agreements currently in place exceeded payroll by $17.9 million in 2019 alone, resulting in more than a half a million dollars paid in income tax to the city. Our agreements with the city, with the companies that we have entered into allow for reimbursements on a percentage of the income tax withholdings that are paid to the city. They're paid in the rear, meaning that the incentive payments we are giving in 2020 are for payments that are, as a percentage of the payments we received last year. And again, as I mentioned, last year's payroll from just those 17, just those seven companies exceeded the minimums required by nearly $18 million. I just wanted to have that all back in there.
Director, thank you very much.
Which is a good thing for the city. Fantastic thing for the city, thank you.
Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 522020 has been adopted. Ordinance 532020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $6,623.45 from previously unappropriate monies in Wim Pity Fund 279 to the Edna Road incentive account 279.000.50,008 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 532020 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 532020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 532020 has been adopted. Ordinance 542020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 from unappropriate monies in the CARES Act Grant Fund 205 to the CARES Act Grant Expense Account 205.000.50,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 542020 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 542020 and asked for suspension of all rules, seconded by Ms. Coniston. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Coniston. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 542020 has been adopted. Resolution 192020, adopting the tax budget for the city of Whitehall, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and submitting the same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 192020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Mr. Rodriguez has introduced Resolution 192020 and requested suspension of all rules, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?[1744.81] Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Cantor, Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Resolution nineteen twenty-twenty has been adopted. In addition to this evening, we have resolution twenty, twenty twenty, resolving to approve the then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty 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 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. Mr. Bailey has introduced resolution twenty twenty and asked for suspension of all rules, second by Mr. Rodriguez, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty 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 has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and I do not believe we have any additional comments. Community date board?
Did I see that the splash pad was going to be opening?
You are July the tenth.
How exciting is that?
By reservation only.
Reservation only, get, get your reservations.
You want to go to the website, city website, and you can get all the information, the hours, which I think are Thursday through Sunday is the days, uh, hours, uh, from noon to seven thirty, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, um, four households at a time, uh, with a limit of eight members can reserve ninety minute, ninety minute block of time each week. There's a lot to look at, so if you want to enjoy this splash pad, please do, go on our city's website. I know Megan Myers has did a really good job putting it on there, along with, uh, our parks director and, uh, go and have some fun, it's going to be hot, kids will love it.
Yes, it's wonderful.
Do we have anything else?
No, but on behalf of the Whitehall Community Settlement Association, I want to thank everybody that put their animals on the virtual pageant, we had over a hundred animals in a week, um, it was a surprise to me, um, I shouldn't be, I see how much you all love your animals, um, it was exciting to see, we had a couple bearded dragons and, uh, a bird, and, uh, lots of cats and lots of dogs, so thank you so much, everybody, for putting your, your animals on that, and, uh, we will be out giving out prizes shortly.
How many times did Mark put Sophie on?
Oh.
She was on there a few times.
I'm glad you did.
Not qualified.
I'm glad you did it virtual and not have the animals walking down Ealing Road, because I hated to be behind her. Just so you know. I know Zach would have hated his crew on that night, too.
Okay, here is nothing further, I'll move to poll council, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President, would like to thank everyone for watching and thank council here for the ones that are doing well and showing up, and have prayers for all those that are suffering through this, and hope that everyone does well, have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank the two, uh, ladies that wrote in for poll public, Amy and Nicole, um, just want everybody to stay smart, stay safe, take this seriously. Fall ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, uh, thank you Nicole and Amy for your letters, um, as far as Denny's, like I told Karen, it's a grand slam for Whitehall. Del Taco, Kate Blinney, uh, and just a reminder, those working from home, make sure you have Whitehall as your tax, you know, that we're getting our tax dollars here at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coniston.
I would just like to thank everybody for viewing, and, uh, thank you Michael, and thank you Amy for sending in the letters, um, and, uh, we'll see everybody again next week.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President, good meeting, very good meeting, very informative, I do encourage our residents that, uh, about the backflow valve, I know a lot of you will be very happy, I thank the administration, I know we've, we've talked about this a couple of times in, in due time, it came through, so this will definitely help, um, Amy and Nicole, thank you so much for your letters, um, would you have concerns? There's no doubt about it, this is a very, very tough time that we're going through, so we'll get through it, it is a very serious time that we're going through. I've had a couple people send me some texts, text messages about music in the park. Um, Parks and Recreation will have a meeting Wednesday night, tomorrow night, um, seven o'clock, um, they'll be doing it, uh, through a virtual, um, and I'm sure that they will